Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order the December 20th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Indian River County Commissioners. We will start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces, and followed by an invocation by the Minister Jack White from the Gifford Church of Christ, and then we'll be led in a pledge of allegiance by our former sheriff and now Commissioner Darrell Lor. If everybody would please rise.
Good morning. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, it is once again we approach your throne with bowed heads and humble hearts. We thank you, dear heavenly Father, for waking us up this morning in a right frame of mind. We thank you, dear heavenly Father, for life, health, and strength. We thank you most of all for your son, Jesus, who died on Calvary's cross, that we might have a chance to inherit everlasting life. We come just now, dear heavenly Father, asking you to bless this meeting. We ask that you continue to bless the leaders of this county, continue to give them the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that the decisions that they make may be blessings to the citizens here in Indian River County. We ask, dear heavenly Father, as we are about to enter a new year, we ask for world peace, more love, unity, and more harmony one with another. We also ask, dear heavenly Father, that you continue to bless those who are in public safety, law enforcement, EMT, and firefighters, and also those that are in the medical field that continually keep us healthy. But a special prayer for those members of the Armed Forces, continue to watch over them, protect them from seen and unseen dangers at all times. And as we go from day to day, dear heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to bless us, not just this day, but all the days to come. This prayer we so humbly ask in Jesus' name, let us all together say, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor White. All right. Commissioners, moving on to number four, any deletions to the agenda or any emergency items?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Fleischer.
I understand you want to table item 5A?
I'd like to move 5A to the end of the meeting.
Move that to the end of the meeting?
If we could, please, yes, sir.
So you're not choosing to table it?
Okay. It's something special we gotta do.
Yes.
So.
So we'll move that to the end of the agenda?
Okay, I have a motion to move 5A to the end of the meeting. That was seconded by Commissioner Lor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If Carrie Adams, any further additions, deletions?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda?
We have a motion to prove the agenda is written and as amended.
Second.
Do I have a second? Two seconded.
Whichever one, toss up.
Yes.
Okay, I'll give it to Commissioner Adams. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, moving on to proclamations, 5B. Presentation of proclamation honoring Kathleen Rim Snyder on her retirement from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office. Come on down. And this will be done by Commissioner Fleischer, by the way.
Kathleen is here and.
The sheriff is here and.
Sergeant Rim Snyder is here as well. Sheriff, thank you. Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to present this proclamation. I've known these two quite some time. I believe it falls back to when I attended LE-76 somewhere in the 90s with Brian. He was my classmate in law enforcement. I had the opportunity to meet a wonderful family, a family of faith, benevolence, and dedication. And I got to really understand, our families got to know the Rim Snyders. And Kathleen, Kathleen was such a dedicated individual and found out that she had already been hired by the Sheriff's Office many years back. I don't know, I guess there was an old program that used to hire them in middle school. Forty years, wow. That is an incredible element of dedication to the citizens. And besides that and all the things that Kathleen's done that's not on the proclamation, all the community-based, faith-based endeavors that she did to return back to the community while she was performing her duties in the Sheriff's Office, ensuring that we all get back home safe, in communication. And then the most novel thing that I just, I'm amazed at how many times that Kathleen has been thanked for her service in the civil process. I mean, when we, when law enforcement issues a citation, you don't often get a thank you. It's a rare opportunity. Can you imagine getting the type of documents that she delivered that, and getting a thanks? Documents that alter people's lives, and they're not very happy about it sometimes, but they can say thank you and appreciate the way she delivered the service. So it's mixed emotions that we see her retiring at this point, and I hope that there are others that have been trained to walk her path in the same fashion that she has done so vibrantly for this community. With that, I'd like to proceed with the proclamation honoring Kathleen Rim Snyder on her retirement from Indian River County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Kathleen Rim Snyder is retiring from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office effective December 28th, 2022. Whereas Kathleen's journey at the Indian River County Sheriff's Office culminates with over forty years of distinctive service. And whereas Kathleen was employed in many capacities over her lengthy career, including dispatch supervisor, communications commander, but spent the majority of her calling serving the citizens as a process server in the legal process unit. Whereas, over her tenure, Kathleen received many acknowledgements and commendations for her efforts, including the Grand Cordon and the Going the Extra Mile Award. And whereas Kathleen worked diligently under five sheriffs to protect and serve the citizens of Indian River County and the state of Florida. Whereas Kathleen's remarkable dedication to her profession has earned her the appreciation of sheriff flowers and all those who have had the honor of working with her. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board laudes the contributions that Kathleen Rim Snyder has made to the citizens of Indian River County during her highly successful law enforcement career and wishes her a happy and prosperous retirement. Duly adopted this 20th day of December, 2022, and it is signed by all five county commissioners. Kathleen.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much. I enjoyed my career here.
We'd all like to hear you.
I said I've enjoyed my career here. I've pretty much grown up here. And the people, they were family, and I still consider them family, and I wish them all the very best, those that continue to serve this community. Thank you again.
And fine job you did with Brian, which I'm sure now there's.
Riding her coattails for years, so.
I'm sure there's things on the list that need to be accomplished or any direction, any big plans, or we're just gonna roll it through.
Wherever God leads me, whatever doors he's opened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
I just want to say thank you guys for taking time out to recognize our employees that are retiring. And I think the fact that we have a 40-year employee retiring today and a 33-year employee retiring just is unbelievable. Seventy-plus years of experience walking out the door at the end of this year. And so we can't say enough great things about Kathleen. She's done an incredible job over forty years from dispatch to her current position in civil. She's certainly gonna be missed, and all of us around the agency will notice her absence on a daily basis without a doubt. So thank you, Kathleen. Thank you for all you've done for the citizens of Indian River County.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Good morning, sir. How much longer for you?
Thank you.
We've got one more.
Thank you, congratulations.
Again, Kathleen, congratulations. Next, we have a proclamation going to be presented by Commissioner Lor. This is a proclamation honoring Jackie Craig on her retirement from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office. Jackie, come on down. Commissioner Lor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And most folks know that behind any organization is a good support staff. And I can tell you, working with Jackie for over 12 years, the 33 years that she's put in with this agency primarily in records, and like you said, Commissioner, a lot of not-so-happy people come there for certain reports. But it was an honor to say good morning to Jackie, walk by our office. A quiet employee that you never had any whatsoever, any issues with. And I certainly appreciate that, Jackie. So I shall read this proclamation. Proclamation honoring Jackie Craig on her retirement from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Jackie Craig is retiring from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office effective December 30th, 2022. And whereas Jackie started her career at the Sheriff's Office on April 3rd, 1989, and has provided exceptional service to the citizens for over 33 years. And whereas Jackie was employed in central records for the duration of her career, ultimately being appointed as the records administrator on June 29th, 2020. And whereas Jackie has received many honors and awards for her sterling efforts, including the Grand Cordon and the Employee of the Quarter. And whereas Jackie worked diligently under five sheriffs to protect and serve the residents of Indian River County and the state of Florida. And whereas Jackie's selfless commitment to her profession has earned her the admiration of sheriff flowers and all of those who have had the privilege of working with her. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Indian River County Commissioners that the Board laudes the generous contributions Jackie Craig has made to the people of Indian River County during the outstanding law enforcement career and wishes her a happy and prosperous retirement. Adopted on this 20th day of December, 2022, and Jackie signed by all five county commissioners. Congratulations to you.
Sheriff.
I just want to thank everybody. I've enjoyed my 33 years with the agency. I've always stayed in central records. I never had a desire to go to a different office. Not that it didn't enter my mind occasionally, but I liked what I did. I liked the everyday ups and downs of the office and taking care of my staff, assisting my boss. And like I say, thank you all. And like I say, I've enjoyed my 33 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
As you guys know, records are critical to our operation over there, keeping track of everything that's happening. Thousands of records passed through every day, and Jackie and Renee and their team just do an incredible job. So again, much like Kathleen, we will miss Jackie as part of our operation over there. And you know, we recently had Terry in for dispatch. It's gonna take a lot of folks to replace these guys. When I come before you for the budget, don't forget, of all these people that are walking out, we gotta replace them with new faces. So it's, you know, Jackie's done a great job for our community and for our agency, and we're just really proud of these folks. So thank you again for taking time out of your day to recognize them. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you to Jackie, because she was supervisor when I came in, and she has taught me everything I know about being a supervisor, and she will be greatly missed. She really will.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is probably the most amount of words I've ever heard Jackie speak. She's not known for her speaking parts.
Who's the one I used to say that came in the office all the time and I said needed a soapbox because he'd give us a lecture?
Oh, trust me, we're aware of that.
She must be talking about you, Sheriff. No, but Jackie, thank you so much for all that you did in ensuring that we looked the best because of the way you handled the records and got them to us in an expeditious fashion without rhyme or reason. You, you just did your job so duty-bound, and you made us all look good. So thank you. Imagine if I was on a soapbox.
Merry Christmas, Lord.
Just wait. Get a picture. Soapbox. That's pretty impressive, over 70 years, like the sheriff said of the institutional knowledge. That's for sure. All right, moving on to item six. We have approval of minutes 6A and 6B, 6A from October 4th and 6B from October 11th.
Mr. Chair, move approval of both.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer. Did I get a second? Y'all gotta speak up for me. Second by Commissioner Adams. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Those both pass unanimously. All right, number seven, information items from staff or commission not requiring board action. Normally, we don't, sometimes don't even, we just kind of move on through this unless there's highlights, and there's definitely highlights in this one. We have four county employees that are retiring. This must be the month of retirement being the end of the year. We have, there's a proclamation that was given to William H. McGrath on his retirement from the Indian River County Commissioners Department of Utilities and Wastewater Treatment. And I know he'd been there, been there a good while. And then the next one really, 7B really struck, struck me because, not that I knew Terry Suther very well, I just knew he'd been here a long time. And when I started at the fire department, he started shortly thereafter. And Terry Suther is retiring from the Utilities and Operations Division with 39 and a half years. That's, that's pretty awesome. And I know, Jason, you wanted to make a couple of remarks about that?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you to all of those employees. We've got William McGrath from Utilities with 22 years of service. Mike Jenkins from Facilities Management with 30 years of service. And Miles Holmes as well with 16 years of service from Roden Bridge. I want to have, call special attention to Terry Suther because Terry started with the utility in its infancy. Well, maybe preschool. I think the utility was about four or five years old. Didn't have a whole lot of customers. It was really at the start. And Terry was here and built the utility into what it is today. And, and, and you won't hear this often, but I think there's no one person who contributed more to what our utility is today than Terry Suther in his 39 and a half years of service. Grew the utility over time, was just the most dedicated employee you could ask for, and, and, and just a great person as well. And, and more than just water plants and sewer plants and all those types of things, he built the, he helped build the staff and the people. And so his contributions will be felt for many years to come because a lot of the people that are here today learned a lot from Terry and have benefited from, from his leadership over the years and was, was just a great leader and a tremendous person and has done so much for the utility. So I wanted to have special recognition for him. And I think we may have, we may have one or two others that may want to say something about Terry as well with, with the, with the board's indulgence. So thank you.
Sean?
If you may, Sean Leesky, Utilities Director. You know, I, I was only here for a very short time while Terry was still working. You know, Terry, while he's officially retiring within this month, really kind of walked away from the utility department at the end of June, you know, and has been taking time off since. Terry is, you know, when I started, you know, he's a very honorable man. I mean, he, he, you could tell the passion he had for what he did. And I started, he was one who took me under his wing. He was more than happy to show me this utility and show what, show what this utility was about. You could tell that he took a lot of great pride in, in helping to build the utility to what it was today. And we certainly wouldn't be where we are today without all the dedication that he provided to this organization over, over his 39, nearly 40 years of service. So my thanks, Jason, for taking the time to recognize him. You know, he's a, he didn't want to be talked about today, but I do feel, you know, it was important to recognize him for what he did and what he meant to this utility.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jeff Smith, Clerk of the Court. I had the honor and the privilege of knowing Terry for a long time, working with him at the Utilities Department, and also performing his wedding for him, so as clerk. But I think the thing that needs, that needs to be said about Terry is he could have taken the easy route. He was injured in, on a workplace accident, and he took the hard road and decided to stick it out and work for the utility and built it up to what it is. So he is an honorable man, and I just wanted to make sure that that comment got on the record. Thank you.
Commissioner Simon Schumeth, the Managing Director of the Solid Waste disposal district. I too share and echo what's been said here. Terry's been an amazing mentor to me for the last 18 years. You know, just his knowledge, I call him the historian of utilities. Like Jason said, I mean, he was here sort of the, the beginning of utilities and what it is today. And, and, and he's left a great legacy behind and great mentoring over, over the years. So I'm gonna miss him, miss him already in, in, in utilities. But, you know, just want to congratulate him and wish him, wish him the best. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Commissioners?
I echo it all as far as Terry. He was one of the individuals who, when I came aboard here in 2006, that he oriented me into the understanding of what utilities was. I do remember specifically he referred to the growth of the county and the growth of, of utilities in Indian River County. And he said, he recalled when he first began, there was one well and a handful of customers. And we've grown since then. But he took his, his position so seriously and was so dedicated to it. And we're very fortunate that he trained individuals to carry on what he did and what he intended to do for Indian River County, and we wish him the best.
Mr. Chair, when I started in this position, my mom always told me that if you needed to know anything about utilities, to go talk to Terry. And if he didn't know about it, then it probably didn't happen. But, or at least nobody was talking about it. But I just would be remiss if I didn't pass on her congratulations to him on his retirement and wish him all the best.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you. Well deserved, there's no doubt about that. Jason already mentioned Michael Jenkins on his retirement and Miles Ray Holmes Jr. on his retirement from, from Public Works. And Commissioner Lor, I see you reappointed Dr. Day.
I do, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank.
He's a huge asset to that planning and zoning board. He's a good man.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment that when you add up these years, we're, we're just, and we did spend a little time on proclamations we don't normally do at their request. It totals up to 107.5 years of institutional knowledge as retired this month.
Yeah, that's amazing.
So we gotta kick it up.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely, definitely important, and it's definitely those people should be congratulated, and they did a whole lot for, for this county.
A lot of time.
Made it a better place, that's for sure. All right, moving on to item eight, consenting agendas. Commissioners, anything you wish pulled for discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull 8C.
8C?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? All right, I have a motion to pull 8C. Anybody out there? We need a motion for that, right?
No.
Anybody from the public?
We need a motion on yours?
No.
No, we don't. I don't think so. Anybody from the audience, anything on the consent agenda that they'd like pulled for discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, move approval as amended.
Moves approval, we have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer to prove the consent agenda as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Adams, 8C.
Thank you. And I know this is a standard item that we do every so often, especially when we're going on break. But I just felt it was important that with Jason leaving and Mike transitioning into the interim, that, you know, this is a good time to remind everyone that this is just a standard maintaining the status quo item to handle necessary business. It's not a blanket endorsement to go off the rails or take some kind of irregular actions. We're just keeping the county's business and the county vehicle between the lines, kind of in a babysitting or supervisory capacity of the organization. So I just thought it was important to kind of get that out there. And with that, I'm happy to move approval.
I'll take the second on that. Motion by Commissioner Adams, second by myself. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the audience wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none? I'm gonna lose the track here. Okay, let's start over.
You need more coffee.
Anybody in the audience, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. I think I got that right. Just bear with me. It's close to Christmas, so, all right. Moving on to item nine. Constitutional officer in government agencies. Madam Supervisor, she's back again. You were here last week.
I didn't think I'd be back this quickly. Well, good morning, Commissioners. I'm excited to be here today. Actually, this past Thursday, our office was notified that we are eligible for. Actually, this past Thursday, our office was notified that we are eligible for an election security enhancement grant. And this grant allows for the purchase of goods or services for voting technology, for upgrades or enhancements for the 2024 election cycle. The good part is there are no matching funds required. And a portion of the grant will fund our yearly subscription to our Albert Network Monitoring System, which is $10,600. And the remaining funds, we want to use to upgrade sixty-one of our EVs, which are our electronic poll books, that are reaching their end of life. So in order to qualify for these grant funds, attachment B of the memorandum of understanding must be signed by the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. And you have that memorandum. And it's just to affirm that we have no outstanding federal funds that were awarded in previous years from the Florida Department of State from HAVA funds, which we do not. And I'm also seeking permission today to trade in the sixty-one existing EVs that we have. We have more than that, but this is all that will be covered by the grant. So we can have permission to upgrade those. And I have a copy of all their serial numbers and the asset tag numbers. So I'll need your permission to do that as well. But we are always excited to get money that we are not anticipating having, which is really going to help us so that in 2024, we'll have the state-of-the-art equipment to conduct that presidential election.
Awesome.
That's awesome. No matching ground, huh? No matching funds. That's good.
I'd be happy to move approval if there's no questions.
Who was that, the second?
The little guy in the corner.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adams and seconded by Commissioner Fleischer to approve the Supervisor of Elections' request for grant. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five oh. Congratulations and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank our county administrator for everything that he's done for the Supervisor of Elections' office. It has been certainly a pleasure working with him. And anytime we've ever asked for anything, he's jolly on the spot and has it done for us. So thank you so much.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Mars?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank our Supervisor of Elections for her community service, not only at the Supervisor of Elections' office, but for ringing the bell for the Salvation Army, the post office on Cardinal. Blessings. Thank you very much.
We raised almost $750, and that was up $300 from the year before. So we really enjoy doing that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public items. We have a public hearing, ten A one. This is a public hearing to consider a resolution electing to use the uniform method for levy, collection, and enforcement of non-ad valorem assessments for North County Water and Sewer Project Phase Two and its legislative in nature. Counselor?
Commissioner, I'll, I'll take this item. And because I'm wearing the jacket, I'll try to go as quickly as possible, so I'm on the camera as little as possible. But today, we have a public hearing on the proposed resolution electing to use the method under the statute whereby the board would collect assessments through the tax collector and our property appraiser on the tax roll. This is just like we had last week for the Ozlo Park paving project. This week, the item is for the water portion of the North County Water and Sewer Project Phase Two. Again, this is just simply about the water portion of that overall project. County Attorney's Office recommends that the board open the public hearing, take any comments from the public, and then close the public hearing, and then approve the resolution, which would have the effect of choosing to use the tax collector and property appraiser to collect our assessments on this project. And then also recommend that the board approve the draft agreement with the tax collector and property appraiser. It's an agreement consistent with the, the one we did for the Ozlo Park item. And I'm certainly available for questions. I know Sean Leeski, as our Utility Director, is also available for questions.
Commissioners, any questions, staff?
No.
It's well needed.
Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on the public hearing?
Chair, I'll-
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Actually, I know Susan's involved in this. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll be happy to second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Laura, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Anybody wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero.
Thank you for your support.
Ten A two, amending the Indian River County Code, Chapter 205, Parks and Recreation. This is also legislative in nature. Counselor, you going to take this one?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So this past year, the Florida Legislature finally opened up the preemption statute governing smoking in county parks and municipal parks as well. It now allows the county to regulate smoking in our parks, except for, I believe, its unfiltered cigars. So the, the County Attorney's Office, working with the Parks Division, has worked together to draft this ordinance that will now include this type of regulations in our parks. And basically, County Attorney's Office recommends that the board open up the public hearing, take any comments on this item, close the, the public hearing, and adopt the ordinance. And with that, I turn it back over to the Chair for questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Commissioners, any questions, staff?
I do have one question. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to belabor this because this, we're just, we've already kind of approved it in discussions. But did you say we can regulate everything but unfiltered cigars?
Yes. So under the statute, and it's specific-
That's weird.
Yes, it was strange. I, I believe that one of our distinguished legislators in Tallahassee happens to own a business that sells cigars.
Oh, now it doesn't seem weird. Okay.
I'm glad I was able to answer that question.
Just-
Commissioners, any further questions? All right. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on the public hearing at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Laura. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That passes five zero. All right, moving on. That's the only two we have, right? Public discussion items. Ten B one, request to speak for the United States Lifeguard Association, reference a Heroic Act awards presentation for Lieutenant Dustin Lightsey of the Florida Wildlife Commission. Joe, Mr. McManus?
Good morning. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Joe.
My name is Joe McManus, and I'm an officer of the United States Life Saving Association. I'm joined here today by the Captain of Indian River County Ocean Rescue, Jonathan Billings. And I'm also joined by Lieutenant Dustin Lightsey, his wife Heather, and his son Sawyer. The United States Life Saving Association is a national nonprofit organization that promotes open water life, water safety. We do this through agency accreditation, the promulgation of lifesaving standards in the open water environment, lifesaving sport, and other means. Today, I'm joined by Dustin Lightsey. In nineteen eighty-seven, our national organization adopted a policy whereby we award Heroic Act awards for both lifeguards and non-lifeguards. And this brings me to Dustin Lightsey, who's here today to receive a Heroic Act Award from US LA. It's said that lightning never strikes the same place twice. But whoever coined that phrase did not anticipate Dustin Lightsey. He has made two rescues in the Indian River Sebastian Inlet area. The first one was in 2017. A boat was capsized and lodged against the jetty. Dustin Lightsey was on duty that day, went into the water, and saved five people's lives. Fast forward to 2022, in June, he was off duty that day, and he happened to be surfing at the Sebastian Inlet Park. There were big waves, and it was pushing, the north swell was pushing water against the north side of the jetty. Dustin doesn't use a leash when he surfs. A leash is a tether that, that attaches you to your board. At one point, he took a wave and he, he wiped out, and his board went to shore. He swam into shore, and there were two teenage girls there who helped retrieve the board and handed it to him. And he noticed that, and he thanked them and went back out. As he was surfing, for a few minutes later, he noticed only one girl on the shore, and she looked like she was in distress. She was making gestures that worried Dustin. He looked around the area, and he saw her friend had gone into the water and was caught in a dangerous rip current right on the north side of the jetty. Dustin paddled over, secured the, the young lady on his board. And according to Dustin, it took him a good ten to fifteen minutes to get out of the rip current, and he was exhausted. But he saved her life. She would have drowned without that. So with that, I want to thank Dustin for his heroism, and I'll have Jonathan read the proclamation or the award.
Hi, Commissioners. On Wednesday, June eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, in Sebastian Inlet, Florida, Mr. Lightsey acted with the utmost bravery and selflessness when he responded to a victim in distress who had been caught in a strong structure-caused rip current in a dangerous surf. Without hesitation, Mr. Lightsey responded to the victim with just a surfboard and no formal lifeguard training, and brought the victim to safety. Mr. Lightsey demonstrated the highest level of bravery that day, and he selflessly risked his life to save the life of another.
It's a credit to have Dustin Lightsey as an employee of Florida Wildlife Commission. And it's a credit, it's a pleasure to know him personally. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it, Mr. Joe. I appreciate it. And the Lifesaving Association, this is the second time I was able to receive this. I receive it on behalf of those that do many rescues that never get noticed. You know, there's, there's a lot that happens out there. And so I also want to thank the Lord for putting me in the right place at the right day and time to be of service, to help others, and to give me the training of growing up surfing in big waves and all that, and for keeping me safe. Because sometimes we are putting ourselves in danger, and I want to come home to my family. And I thank the Lord for keeping me safe in those as well. So thank you all for your time.
Mr. Chair, I just, I just want to say I'm, I'm very glad to have this proclamation today. Lieutenant Lightsey does a lot, lot more throughout the county, keeping our residents safe, whether it's, it's in the woods or in the marsh or on the ocean. And he has been involved in several very difficult situations. And I'm just, I'm glad that he's in our community, and he's one of those people that responds and helps keep everybody safe. So this is just a tip of the iceberg of what you have done to positively impact people. And I'm very glad to be here to see you getting your recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Big Joe coming aboard? All right. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Good to see you. Merry Christmas, Jonathan.
Always there.
Thank you.
Always there, Joe. A good man.
All right, moving on.
Longtime lifeguard.
How come we don't have any county administrators matters today? Was this like your last day or something?
I'm slacking at the end here, you know. Might take a long lunch or something, too.
What's up with that? All right. Well, moving on to County Attorney's Matter, City of Sebastian Graves Brothers Annexation Update. Counselor?
Good morning again. I didn't know what to expect when I had filed this item, so I wanted to make sure I had a placeholder item to discuss with the board what happened on last Wednesday night. So I attended the City of Sebastian City Council meeting on Wednesday night last week regarding the Graves Brothers annexation and its companion land use map amendment. Both of those items were actually deferred until February eighth. And I can tell you that its cities hope to have a draft agreement, annexation agreement, available to the public at least two weeks before that date. So just simply waiting to see what comes out as a draft annexation agreement, and then from there, move on to the city council meeting on February eighth. And with that, I turn it back over to the Chair unless there are any other questions.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any questions of the Counselor? All right, moving on to item fifteen, Special District and Boards. We'll take these one at a time. Solid Waste Disposal District, fifteen B one, approval of Solid Waste Disposable District Meeting Minutes of September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Anybody wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero. Fifteen B two, approval of Solid Waste Disposal District Meeting Minutes of October fourth.
Do you have approval?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Adams, and seconded by Commissioner Fleischer, correct?
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five zero. Fifteen B three, Work Order Number Fifty-six to Kimbley Horn for the Solid Waste Disposal District Annual Financial Reports.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Anybody wish to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes five zero. Fifteen B four, Amendment Number Two to Work Order Number Fifty-seven to Kimbley Horn and Associates for roadway and drainage improvements at the Indian River County landfill.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes five oh. Fifteen B five, Amendment Number Three to Landfill Gas Agreement with No Petro Eco District LLC.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Anybody wish to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes five zero. All right, moving on to five A. We have a proclamation for Jason Brown for her twenty-four years of distinguished service. Excuse me one second while I reach down here and get what I need to do to read. Well, I'm going to go ahead and just read the proclamation and say everything I need to say after we get done. And we'll open it up to Commissioners and, and to anybody from the audience. But I will lead this off by saying that most of the time, as you all know, we, we do proclamations for somebody that's, that, that's retiring or, or a group that does stuff in the community. Well, I can tell you that, that I think this, even though he's resigning to, to go to work for some other guy sitting in the audience out there that we all don't like anymore. But this deserves a proclamation. Twenty-four years of service with the county is a retirement for most people, and he's been here for twenty-four years. Not just six as our county administrator, but twenty-four years. And basically, that, that would be considered pretty much a, a retirement by, by most standards. And the second thing is, is for all- And the second thing is, is for all the, the good and fantastic things he's done, it hasn't been easy. It hasn't been an easy road. He's probably got the hardest job in the world other than maybe a principal of a large high school or a, or a, you know, college football coach or something like that. I can't think of another harder job than, than being a county administrator. So, I want to put to rest any, any concerns or whatever you would have to have a proclamation for somebody that's resigning, that this, in this case, this doesn't apply. This proclamation is, is well deserved. So it's my honor to read a proclamation honoring Jason Brown for 24 years of distinguished service to the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. Whereas Jason Brown, a native son of Vero Beach, is departing from the Indian River County Administrator's Office effective December 31st, 2022. And whereas Jason started his career with the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners on May 1st, 1998 and has provided exceptional service to the citizens for more than 24 years. First in the office of management and budget and subsequently as the county administrator, where he oversaw the activities of eight departments with 900 employees and a $450 million budget. And whereas Jason prioritized state-of-the-art projects to help improve water quality in the Indian River Lagoon such as Osprey Acres, which serves as both recreational amenity and upland habitat preserve and the Septic to Sewer Projects in North Sebastian, West Willbasso and Roseland, which reduces harmful nutrient loading in the Indian River Lagoon. And whereas Jason successfully led the county response through multiple emergency events, hurricanes and as well as COVID-19 pandemic and contributed to the development and continued improvement of a critical incident stress management policy and services to support first responders in fire rescue. And whereas Jason was key to the acquisition and renovation of the first permanent North County offices, providing more convenient access to county services for the rapidly growing North County population. And whereas Jason facilitated negotiations with Major League Baseball to operate the Jackie Robinson Training Complex as a year-round destination for the MLB and other sports tournaments, attracting visitors from across the country and also secured an agreement with Bright Line for 31 million in railroad crossing safety improvements, ensuring that Bright Line train crossings in the county are as safe as possible. And whereas Jason's complete commitment to his duties as county administrator have brought great credit upon himself and the staff and contributed greatly to the continued positive image of Indian River County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board lodges the many contributions Jason Brown has made to Indian River County during his lengthy tenure and wishes him the greatest success in all of his future endeavors, adopted this 20th day of December, 2022 and signed by all five county Commissioners. Mr. Brown, job well done. I think you can actually say that it hasn't always been a bed of roses every day when you came to work, but I think you can hold your head high and walk out of here and said you made a difference.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fleischer, turn it on you. So much has been said in the proclamation. I consider them highlights at best. As far as Jason's commitment to this community, it was head-on all the time and I truly appreciate that. You know, being county administrator, day-to-day is one, one heck of an obligation, especially when you have to answer to five individuals who are expected to know all the answers and operations are happening and you have 165,000 bosses as well. Well, we do. You only had five. But in dealing with that, day-to-day is one thing, but Jason, I just want you to know that during, during the time during that, that COVID experience, I don't know if anybody remembers that, Jason most certainly remembers it, that was an act of unforgiving, no information, limited resource at times and I think that this county shined in the address because of your tireless efforts. And in addition, during the storms, we want to thank your bride and your children because I don't know if anybody's aware, we don't have the great sleeping accommodations at the EOC, but Jason, you were there 24/7 and ensured that we kept operating the way we needed to operate to recover and I want to thank you for those emergent times because they're pretty, I mean, I know you ask for input, but it takes a lot of strength and courage to carry that through the way you have done and done so, so well for the citizens of Indian River County. Thank you.
Commissioner Law?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I was reflecting on it yesterday briefly with Jason. We go back about 14 years, sometimes in opposing roles, but I will tell you that we worked it out and we certainly showed respect for each other and as Commissioner Fleischer mentions, I don't think the public knows when you're in a hotspot or the EOC, for example, and Jason and others are making decisions that probably aren't going to be popular, that weighs on a person. That truly weighs on a person and I can tell you, it's, it's refreshing to know that, that Jason, in fact, understands the pressures of the job and I think we all should respect that because it's not an easy job, not an easy job for anyone. So I wish him well and I enjoyed working with you, Jason.
Madam, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, I, I've worked through my seven stages of grief over this whole situation, so I finally arrived at acceptance and being happy for Jason. You know, we go back longer than commission as well. I think it started when you were Budget Director and I was on TDC and Kristin, poor Jason, he would see me come in and it was like you could kind of see him tense up, oh, what's, what's Susan going to talk about now? What's going to happen? But you helped me work through those as a new council member and a new member of TDC and I really appreciate, you didn't have to do that in your role with the county and I was with the city and you always went the extra mile to help me make sure I understood what I was talking about, even if I didn't listen to you and went off the rails anyway. And then, you know, you came on board as the administrator about the time I came on board as the Commissioner, so helping to train me in that role, I know, was, was a big headache for you, but we had a lot of fun, I think, and I always look forward to our Monday meetings. Even if we didn't have a commission meeting, I would look forward to coming in and just talking about what was going on with the county. You know, we would, we would do about 20 minutes of county business and then 40 minutes of just randomness, which I always really, you know, starting the week off with, with some laughter was always a good thing. So I, I have very much appreciated working with you, Jason. Your moral and ethical compass that you use to make decisions and to keep us on track is, is bar none and I think you have left some big shoes to fill. And I just, again, like everybody else, I want to thank you for your selfless commitment to our county. I don't think people understand the difficulty that the job that you have is. There is a, you're never really off duty. You have to manage five different drastically different personalities on top of all the department heads and the staff that goes along with that and you do a yeoman's job. You have done a fantastic job. I'm always been very proud to introduce you as our county administrator. I will always be proud to do that and to just have gotten the opportunity to work with you. I consider myself very lucky. And Jeff, I do know that he's going to be across the hall, so I apologize in advance if I randomly pop over there, but I will try not to distract him too much because he, he's now working for you and kudos to your depart, to your office for that because he is a very, very valuable member of any team that he's on.
Commissioner Moore's.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, that has already been said and I didn't have the opportunity to work with you quite as long as some of the others, but I think what stood out the most in my mind was your financial acumen, that whatever question we might have had regarding any of the finances with the county, you're always quick, either knew the answer or quick to obtain it and I always appreciated that. And grace under pressure is such an important thing to the community. I'm talking about especially COVID now, where we had to reassure people in a time of, of great uncertainty and great anxiety. So, you know, thank you for that and I know you, you worked quite closely with, well, Chief Stone is, has since retired also, but he was, you know, he, you and he were boots on ground during that period of time and that's, you know, much appreciated. And I certainly can understand your desire to spend more time and I showed, I showed, I showed Mr. Brown this yesterday. I saved it from last year, his beautiful family Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas card, just because I, I just, I just loved it. You do, you really do have a beautiful family and to, to spend more time with them, I think, is, it's just, it's just lovely and I, I wish you and, and your family, you know, all the best.
Counselor?
So, I guess I bring a different perspective to the, to the day I saw this one, getting to work with Jason for, first off, as Jason is the Budget Director and then as the county administrator. The, the two things I want to really make sure are very clear is Jason made my job as the county minister, as the county attorney, very easy. First off, just his, his intellect and his knowledge and then on top of that, the historical information contained in him. So I knew that if there was a question up here as to, you know, what happened in 1999 about the, and before I had to even like start jumping into my iPad or digging through some records, Jason would say, oh yeah, what happened was, and it was just answered and the board would thank Jason and we'd move on. And, and then just coming up with, with amazing decisions and well-thought-out decisions for this county, just, you know, it, it wasn't the type of thing where I needed to, to pull a county minister aside, say, hey, I really think we're, you know, we need to really think about this more, we're going down the wrong path because Jason was so dedicated to this county and wanting to make the right decisions for this board and for the people of Indian River County. And so with that, I, I want to finish with saying, you know, I just, I trusted Jason so much and I so believed in what he was doing and so I just wanted to thank Jason for, for those years getting to work with him.
Thank you, Counselor. Jason, I've known you for, for quite a while too. I, I think the first time that I, that I really met you and interacted with you was back in the days when I was at the Fire Department, we were negotiating a contract and, and Mike was doing a lot of the negotiations on the other side of the table and I think the first time that I really got to see Jason in action is when he came and he started reading off all the financial stuff that we wanted, that we weren't going to get at the time. But, but it was impressive then and I said, you know, this guy's pretty sharp. I said, I think Joe Baird's got the right, you know, it sounds like he's got the right guy in the management and budget office there and then it just kind of, you saw him more and more here and at the commission meeting, especially in the budget session and reading everything off and then it just obviously seemed like a really good choice by, by then Administrator Baird to, to kind of anoint him as the heir apparent and for the Commissioner, Commissioners to approve him to do that role and, and he's, he's, he's absolutely done it, done a fabulous role because even before I was a Commissioner, I would always keep up and, and watch what goes on here and, and try to, try to learn. I've, I've always seen him just be the consummate professional in what he's done and it's been said by, by a few others, but he was, he changed the culture of this county from what it was before and, and of this organization by listening and, and understanding to what the Commissioners wanted and what the department heads wanted to do and then what he knew was the right thing to do. And that's unusual in government sometimes and like I said, you can hold your head high and walk out of here knowing you did a good job. So with that, I know somebody else wants to say something, some other folks, department heads, anything, please feel free. Commissioners, do we let this guy say anything?
It is a public meeting, we can't.
I stand here with severe risk to my personal health, but.
Mr. Clerk.
When you have a chance to grab a talent like Jason, you grab it and, but the two things that I think need to be said, one, you got to admire a guy that makes a hard decision for his family and his first health and, you know, above everything else, that's got to come first. And the second thing is, his legacy is going to be here for a long time. He's trained, he trained his replacement, Kristin Daniels and she does a great job and that's the legacy that Jason's going to leave. He's got all the department heads, you know, that are excellent in what they do and he led them, so I will get now, get away now before I get shot, but anyway, thank you all for letting me speak.
Jeff, when you can't get in the building, don't call me because your card don't work. We'll fix that. What I can say is, is Jason has been one of the best bosses I've ever worked for and I've been around in government for quite some time. Jason's integrity, okay, you don't see that very often. Jason stood up when he was getting pressure from others. He would stand up for either staff or the residents of this county. He would do, and that was the biggest thing. I could trust Jason, like the county attorney was talking about. Jason, you could trust, okay? Jason said something, he, you knew he had his, he had your back and the integrity that he brought to the organization is, is just something you don't see at his level and I got to compliment him on that. It's going to be a big loss for this county. He brought this county, I will say, back into the 21st century when I first took over, we had a lot of work we needed to do, a lot of facilities that needed to be repaired, things to be replaced. I will tell you that he saw this. These aren't the glamorous, build the road, build the park, fix the lagoon, put sand on the beaches. These are the day-to-day operational things that he saw and when I went to him with that, he saw it also and we were able to move forward and bring the facilities up to a standard that we could all be proud of. So again, I can't say enough for Jason. He's going to be missed as the leader of this county and I know that he'll do well for Jeff and I know where he lives, I know where he'll be. I also have control of his swipe card, so he'll have to come see me. But Jason, you're leaving the county in a lot better shape than it was when you took over and I just got to commend you on the job you did and how you stood up for staff. I appreciate that and so does the rest of the department heads.
Good morning. For those who don't know, I'm Christina Moore. I work with the County Attorney's Office and Jason, I just want to say, you really impacted my life and my thought process concerning you way before you became the county administrator. A lot of times, we respect people based on their title and their office, don't mean we respect you personally, but you get the general respect of the title and office. You have not only my respect from the title and office, but you have my respect as a person. He made me feel so welcome when I first became an employee of the county and this happened at 14 bones. He was with his wife. I knew who he was. I had no idea he recognized me and I was with my family and my children and I looked up and my daughter said, who's, I said, that's the Budget Director, whispering. And as he was walking by, he said, hi Christina and I was like, wow, because it's not in your office, people do one thing, but when you outside of your element tells who you really are, which goes back to integrity and kindness and thank you so much. I'm going to miss you. I was really frustrated. You talked about your seven, I think I have four teams. Dylan can tell you, I was in the office having a fit and he said, he's just going across and I said, okay, but I'm going to really miss you. Thank you. and I said, okay. But I'm going to really miss you. Thank you for giving me what we call the warm feeling, the kind feeling, and the belonging to the team feeling. You're going to be missed.
Good morning. Dory Stone with the Chamber of Commerce. I want to, I'm going to deal with this on twofolds. Number one, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, thank you for all your support over the years. Commissioners, as you know, we work very closely with all of you, but Jason has always been our liaison, and I would say, being the new guy here, I always knew who I could call. And actually, for a budget guy, he's actually got a, he's funny. And that's really unusual for a budget person. So, he is funny, which always made the meetings a whole lot more interesting. And on a personal note, I wouldn't be living in Indian River County if it wasn't for Jason Brown. When the former chief was moving down here, Jason highly advised him to consider living in county. So, when he came back and told me, we moved down, we looked around, and at Jason's advisement, we are now proud residents of Indian River County, and I want to thank him for that as well. It's been a life change for Tad and I that has been very welcome. But Jason has always attended all of our Chamber functions, and for that, we appreciate it. And he is also a past Award winner of our Economic Development Award, and he strongly deserves that. He's always been a great promoter of what we do. We look forward to his replacement, we look forward to working with Mike, but we also want to thank Jason for all of his liaison with the Chamber and his support of the Chamber activities. And if Bill Penny was here, he would remind you where you started. So, I'll just throw that out there for that. But thank you, Jason, on both a professional and personal level.
Good morning. Phil Mattson. Hard it is to believe with this head of hair, but I'm now the Elder Statesman of Indian River County's management. I've been here almost as long as Jason, and I could tell you a few things. I go back to an era when everybody was named Jim. You had to be named Jim to work, Jim Chandler, Jim Sexton, Jim Davis, et cetera. I've seen a lot of changes, I've seen a lot of stuff come and go. I've seen a lot of tangible improvements, and that's what resolutions do. You mentioned the Jodger Towns and the environmental projects and the facilities that were built, and obviously, there's some other things that are fairly tangible, IT Department modernization, things like that, relationship with the County Attorney is great, a lot of stuff like that. But what you don't see, the intangible, the hidden side, from a management perspective, the culture has changed, and a little beyond with what Commissioner Irman was saying, it's gone from a culture where you were afraid to do a bad job, to one where you want to do a good job. And that's very, very important, and that's very hard to affect, because when people want to do a good job, you'll see the people, see Ryan back here, the Ryans of the world huddling over long hours trying to get somebody through something, or, you know, it's just my department perspective, the Kelly Bucks and the code people and so forth, really dedicating themselves and devoting and wanting to do a good job. And that's probably been the biggest transformation I've seen, and I've had a few jobs before this one, and it's very hard to affect cultural change like that. So, I thank Jason for that, and wish him the best.
Again, Sean Leeskey, Director of Utilities. I'm definitely not the elderman, I'm probably the newest member of this staff, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank Jason. As Dylan said, he makes no wrong decisions, and he hired me, so. But Jason, honestly, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you. You know, I think a lot of people talked about your honesty and integrity. I mean, that was very evident to me very quickly and early on upon coming here. I've appreciated the conversations we've had, your knowledge of just this organization from top to bottom, you know, every department is hands down more than I could ever imagine. So, you know, I appreciate your ability to, as I think Commissioner Adams mentioned, your ability to pull things up and your ability to remember things and pull back to history is incredible. So, you know, I have appreciated the time I've had and the short time I've had to work with you, and I wish you all the best, and don't be a stranger. Thank you.
Jason, Michael Zito, Assistant County Administrator, your assistant, was with you for 18 of those 24 years, riding next to you or serving under you, and, well, we could talk. I was trying to reminisce on the way in, or the last few days, actually, about what I could say to you publicly, that I haven't said to you privately over the last 18 years, both as Budget Director and as County Administrator. My confidence in you is unwavering. You are our safe place. We would get up in that conference room, and we knew by the time we finished the meeting, we'd have a path that was in the best interest of the county. You know, lots have been said about your intellect, equally as your integrity and your character. It's not easy for us to see you go, but I can say, one thing I hadn't said to you privately is, I want to thank your parents, because they embody what this county is really all about: hard work, selflessness, service, not looking for recognition. And as I said on my first day here at the County Attorney's Office 20-plus years ago, the county is just unspoiled, and I love that about this county, and you embody that virtue. So, with that, I'm proud to call you my friend now. Thank you.
Good morning. Kristen Daniels, Budget Director. I've had the opportunity to work directly for Jason for the last 15 years, and it has been a great pleasure. I have to say, I couldn't have asked for a better mentor or a leader to follow. And just best wishes to you and all the extra time you'll have with your family. And I'm glad you're just going across the hall, so you won't be far. But it's always been a pleasure, and thank you for that.
Good morning. Heman Shumeta. You know, professionally, when I look back all the years in the world of garbage and recycling, when, you know, Jason, as the Budget Director, you know, just kind of rolling up his sleeves and getting dirty, if you will, right, with, you know, waste composition studies and rate studies and recycling studies, you know, he came to tour the recycling facility down in St. Lucie County, just really getting involved in all of our projects. Been a really big support of what we do. When it came to the franchise agreements and the historic changes that we made, you know, people don't probably think about the gray and the blue recycling carts that are out there in the neighborhoods, but that was a historic change for this county, and Jason was part of that big change. And, you know, I wish you well, and on the personal side, you know, I recall when this beard was completely black, running a 10K with Jason, and his parents there being there and taking pictures of us. I think I still have that picture somewhere. And going on to doing, I think, a mud race with Phil there, and doing a triathlon with Eric Olson, some, you know, some good times. And so, I've always loved that balance that Jason has kept, and I'm glad to maybe hopefully see you kind of getting back to that side as well, and maybe going, and I haven't run in a while, but maybe going, doing a short run one of these days. But it's been, it's been an honor to get to know Jason professionally and personally, and I've learned a lot. So, thank you for your leadership, and I'm glad you're not going too far away. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Powell, then.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Jason Brown. I supported Jason the first day he became a County Administrator, and I supported him every day since, and I support him today on his last day. I know I support Jason Brown as the County Administrator, but in any other endeavor he goes into after this, I support Jason Brown 100%. I speak as the President of Black Swan Consulting, being a developer here for over 20 years, and also, I represent the Indian River Neighborhood Association, and we support Jason Brown. I respect Jason, and I support Jason Brown as a developer and as the RNA, but I proudly call Jason Brown my friend. And I'll always support you, Jason. You have my utmost respect and support. Thank you very much for letting me be a part of your team. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, I'm going to walk up here, whip my head down, because I'm disappointed in you. I don't even like you, at all. You've been good to me and my family, and your parents did raise you well. They raised you to be God-fearing, first of all. And when I first met you in these chambers, and I sat and I watched you, I enjoy watching folks, and I watched you and watched you, and I said, you know something? You're just a good man, yeah. It's going to hurt my heart. It's not going to hurt my heart to see that you're no longer the County Administrator, because you've done some great things for our community. And I want to say this, you didn't care what color the individualized were. You didn't care anything about that. When I would call you, you were always, hey, Wilford, I don't know if I can do this. You're always honest with me. And I told you I don't like you. And I would call Ms. Tina on you, and I would tell Ms. Tina to talk to you, to see what we can work out for the Gifford Community and other projects that really brought my interest. But I will say, you and a few County Commissioners went out your way to do a lot of projects that I was involved in. And honestly, you know, I love you like a brother, and I just want to tell you personally, thank you for everything you've done for me and my family. God bless you.
Good morning. My name is Ms. Maya. I work for Public Works Traffic Engineering Division, and it just seems apropos for me to just serenade you one last time.
All right, all right.
But before I do that, working along and underneath Jason's leadership, it's been just like growing up. I came here, I've been with the county probably about 21 years, coming up on 21 years, and Jason was just like a big, big brother, big brother. And my mom, she worked for and has retired, and since worked again with the Health Department, and she has kind of like adopted him as a son, too. So, Jason, congratulations for surviving some of the best and worst seasons of your life. And if I can just do this one last time, the song that came to my mind is, "How can we say thanks for the things that you've done for us, things so undeserved, yet you gave to prove you cared for us? Voices of a million angels cannot express our gratitude. All that we have and ever hoped to be, we owe it all to thee. To God, be the glory. To God, be the glory. To God, be the glory for the things he has done."
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh-oh, you're in trouble now.
I'm Sandy Brown, and we are so proud of you, gentlemen. And thank you, everyone, for all your kind words and that beautiful song.
Wonderful song. My name is Malcolm Brown, and we're the parents of Jason, and if anybody has, I don't think anybody could ever have a better son than this. And I appreciate the Commission and the County and all the employees. Thank God, and thank my wife for the time that he's been here, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
One last thing, Jason, before we give you the floor. We want you to have something to hang in your office over there, along with your other stuff. This is a plaque that we have. Jason E. Brown, Indian River County Administrator, 2016 to 2022. Thank you for a job well done from the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners, and most importantly, the citizens of Indian River County presented this day, 2022.
My turn, I guess, now, huh? Okay. Well, thank you for all of the kind words, you know. Unfortunately, I'm not as articulate as some of the other people that have gone before me, but I'll try my best. And, you know, when I got this job, six and a half years ago, it was the opportunity of a lifetime. I feel that way still. It's really been an honor and a blessing to be able to do this. Really gotten to work with some tremendous people. We've got 900 people to work for this organization that really make everything work, pardon me, and really just such a great, great team. I'm proud of the team that we have, feel that, you know, one of the things is, hopefully, you leave something better than you found it. And I think I get to leave this place better than I found it, and that's thanks more to those 900 people that are just really out there doing the great work every day. I never really thought about doing this when I was a kid, you know, I probably didn't know what a County Administrator was when I was a teenager, like most folks. And when I started work at a school, started with Marine Bank, so I've given that plug for Bill Penny, so I won't be in trouble with him, and learned a lot there, and then came here, and never really, you know, thought that I would go to work for government or in public service, but it's really something that, when I did it, you know, I kind of fell in love with it. You know, it's a tremendous calling to be able to work, to serve the public and serve the community. And that's what we do here from the Commissioners on down throughout the organization. So, it's really been tremendous. Just want to thank everybody that I've gotten to work with, in addition to the tremendous County employees, just tremendous community partners, you know, you really get to meet some wonderful people. We've got great people in this community, and just the talented people, the intelligent people, the committed people that I've gotten a chance to work with. I will never forget that. Want to thank the Commissioners, both current and our former Commissioners, that I've had a chance to work with, learned a lot from you guys, appreciated your leadership and knowledge and wisdom that I think I've gained through the time. Again, you know, just thank you to everybody. Just, heart is filled with gratitude. It's a bittersweet moment, you know. This job is something that it's a tremendous blessing, something that is all-consuming, and so, that's led to my decision to move to another opportunity. But, and it should be all-consuming for whoever does this job in order to do it right. And just want to thank also my family, my wife and my kids, and my parents for all the support they've been. So, thank you. My heart is filled with joy and gratitude. Thank you.
Bring your plaques over here and stand right here. We need to get a photo. All right. Before we adjourn, one more bit of information. Jason, we're having a light reception for you upstairs, provided by your staff. And everybody, everybody's invited if you'd like to come up. With that, Commissioners, anything else for the good of the county today?
Yes, I'd like to say Merry Christmas.[1707.32][1707.32][laughter]
Commissioner?
Merry Christmas.
Madam Vice Chairman?
I hope everybody has a frog-tastic holiday season.[1717.92][1717.92][laughter]
Merry Christmas and happy Hanukkah.
I do. I wish everyone a Merry, Merry Christmas and the happiest of, of New Years. It's, it's been, it's been a pretty good year. And we look forward to a very highly successful and fun and joyous New Year. So thank you, thank you, staff, for all you do all year. It doesn't go unnoticed. It's appreciated. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move upstairs and I'll adjourn the meeting.